This conference will now be recorded.
January tenth council meeting of two thousand twenty-two will be called over. Do you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of sacrifice?
The January tenth council meeting of two thousand twenty-two will be called over. Do you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of sacrifice? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Just so the the audience understands the proceedings that's going to take place. Now that I have opened the meeting, it is now time for the swearing in of the newly elected council members. Where's your clerk? Please.
Mr. Mayor, will you join me down here, please?
Okay, I will.
We'll go ahead and start with council member Schreiber. Repeat after me. I, Margaret Schreiber.
I, Margaret Schreiber.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties. Of council member for Edwardsville, Kansas.
So help me God.
Do you have any comments? Ms. Schreiber, do you have any comments?
Like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who voted for me and I will do my best to uphold my position as city council member and make everybody proud. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Bishop, can you please join us up at the front?
I, Mark Bishop.
I, Mark Bishop.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
To support this Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Kansas. Faithfully discharge the duties. Of Edwardsville, Kansas. So help me God. I just want to say the same thing. Thanks for voting for me. Appreciate it. And then I want to say hi to my wife and my youngest daughter back there. So, hi. Thanks.
Give us just a second. You'll take this spot right at the year.
Mary Lette Kayhart now.
Repeat after me. I, Carolyn Kayhart.
I, Carolyn Kayhart.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties. Of mayor for Edwardsville, Kansas. So help me God.
Mayor McTaggart, hand over the gavel now while. And if you have any comments, Mayor, you will.
Carolyn, congratulations on your election to mayor of Edwardsville. It is it is a very high honor. It was for me and I wish you all success in in the world and I appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Mayor Tiny McTaggart served on the Board of Directors of the Mid-America Regional Council, the Board of Directors of the Wyandotte County Economic Development Council, Unified Government Parks Board, Wyandotte County Library Board. He served as president of the Wyandotte County Parks Foundation and the Wyandotte County Historical Society. He served as chair of the Johnson and Wyandotte County Council of Mayors, as the Unified Government Commissioner for District Seven, on the governing body for the League of Kansas Municipalities from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-one, as the LKM Vice President for two thousand nineteen and president in two thousand twenty. Mayor McTaggart served as mayor in Edwardsville from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-seven and again from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-two. He was awarded the EA Mosher Excellence in Local Government Award in two thousand twenty-one and recognized as Mayor of the Year in two thousand eleven. Please join me in thanking him for the years he dedicated to local government and served our community.
I will add this to my many awards that I have received. And it truly has been a distinct honor to serve the city of Edwardsville and the community. I'm very proud of my service and I'm very proud of the city of Edwardsville and the city council. They have been wonderful. Thank you.
Hey Zach, we have the updated main plate survey.
Yep, that's up here.
There you go.
She has a packet right over there.
What do you need? I'm sorry.
Oh, we got it.
Nevermind. It's all good.
To get us started, I've asked Pastor Mike Vernon of Edwardsville Christian Church to lead us in prayer to start off this new term and this new year.
Would you join me in a word of prayer? Father, as we come this evening, we thank you for those who have served and continue to serve in the community of Edwardsville, those who lead in the various departments and those who serve in those departments to serve the members of this community. Father, to provide the services, to provide protection, whatever it might be. Father, we thank you for those who lead in the area of administration, for those who serve on the city council and the mayor. Father, sometimes it's a thankless job and it's a difficult job at times. But Father, it's so important and so we ask for wisdom and discernment for them and all the decisions that they will be faced, the challenging things that have arisen and will continue to be faced. Father, for the things that will come up. Father, we know that because of their desire to be serving those who are in this community, Father, you will bless them, you will be with them, and I just pray that you would continue to bless this community, Father, and watch over it. We thank you and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The first item in the business is to consider approval of the consent agenda item.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the item consent agenda item as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Bishop.
Steen.
Malott.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Next, we have the opportunity for any comments or requests from the public.
Madam Mayor Kayhart, before we do the comment from the public, we have with us tonight Ms. Nina Kimbrough. Ms. Kimbrough helped the the city in organizing the holiday charity event and she put together a a small video kind of summary of that that she wanted to share with everybody. So, Ms. Kimbrough, I'll open it. You want to take your spot up here. I'll get the video point.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to do this. My name is Nina Kimbrough and I was your community event coordinator for the holiday shop. And I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity and let you know that we were able, our mission in that was to be able to provide low-income children and families and the elderly residents of Edwardsville, Kansas, warm items, toys and food during the winter months and the holiday season. We wanted to make sure that we increase awareness to the community to support those in need, those in poverty, maybe homelessness, single moms, elderly and our veterans, and give neighbors and business and faith and civic groups the opportunity to reach out to the community, neighbors helping neighbors. So, we believe that we were able to do that by spreading goodwill, meeting the family needs with dignity and love and showing respect and compassion for our neighbors. And with the help of our community partners, we were able to work as a team. So on two thousand twenty, on December eighteenth, we had families that received holiday items, which included children and and families. And we were able to increase the numbers that were served last year. And that was that we gave away fifty-five food boxes that were twenty-pound food boxes, which was eleven hundred pounds of food and that was non-perishable items. Twenty-five of those, we had twenty-five turkeys that were given as well, fifty boxes of cereal. Then we had wish list items from the children from Edwardsville Edwardsville Elementary and those donors shopped for those children and those things that they purchased were toys, clothes and extra items. We had over two thousand toys that were also donated, hats and gloves for each child, socks, coats, underwear, toiletries and personal items and care items for each family, stocking stuffers, games and puzzles for each family, books for each child, and then a holiday shop where the children could actually shop for their parents. We had a craft Etsy shop, a couple of crafts, lunch and a family photo that we printed out that they were able to take with them in the in the frame, the Christmas frame that they made for their families. So for the Edwardsville Senior Apartments, we were able to give food boxes and each resident also received a gift bag filled with fruit, mint, socks and toiletries. The number served. As far as the impact, we had thirty families with children. That was a hundred and sixteen children served on forty-three adults. Of fifty-five seniors were served at the at the residence, which totaled a number of two hundred and fourteen persons served. We could not have made this possible without the wonderful help of our community. We had fifteen volunteers that helped with this the day of and before the event and also sixteen community businesses and individuals who contributed with monetary donation. And at the end of the video, it tells those businesses, but I would like to read those names if I might because they are Edwardsville, some Edwardsville businesses and companies that help us in our area. So Pastor Kathleen Ebling-Frazier and the Edwardsville United Methodist Church and the Bonner Springs United Methodist Church, Christ First Ministries with Pastor Melva Jarrett, The Fire Trees, Tim Witheam, The Veil Wine and Spirits, AFL Cleaning and Restoration, Chuck Adams, Kotak Rock LLP, Fastenal M-H-U-V, I-A-F-F sixty-four and FOP Lodge Forty-two and Stan Tech Consulting, Toys for Tots and also Johnson County Christmas Bureau were all those who also actually donated items to to the shop. And then we also had fifteen volunteers. So just want to again thank you for the opportunity and show you this brief video. Just want to thank you again for the opportunity. We got so many, we got so many people who were very excited. They got things that they weren't expecting and we're just really excited that it was a whole experience for their families and that they actually, there was one family of ten. They had four children apiece. They came together as a family. So that was their first photo as a family and so they were able to take that home and they just really seemed to enjoy it. And the children really, we couldn't show the children's pictures of their faces, but they really enjoyed the activities that we had for them, the pictures. They loved seeing the pictures being printed and then also being able to pick things out for their for their families and their parents that they could shop for. So again, thank you for the opportunity and anyone in the community that was involved. We thank you for your help and all the businesses as well and we hope to be able to do it again next year. Thanks.
Thank you so much. What a great outreach to our community. Thank you for the businesses who contributed and all the volunteers' hard work. Did we have anyone who wanted to come for public comment? At the beginning, if you'll please state your name and address. And then I just wanted, I just wanted to reiterate as well that thank you so much for coming for to the meeting to give your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, keeping in mind the council cannot respond at this time, but may address your concerns during the council comments at the end of the meeting. And then if you'll just state your name and address.
Certainly. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I apologize on that as well compared to our previous speaker. My name is Jenna Woodbury. This is my husband, Joseph Woodbury. We are at seven one seven North Seventh Street in Edwardsville. We're up on the hill, actually just a few floors down from Mr. McTaggart. We are here. It seems inevitable that the RHID project is probably going to move forward between Fourth Street and Hundred and Second Streets. And that is basically our backyard. And while our initial reaction would be that we do not want that project to move forward with it being inevitable, we just want to be here and be a presence to make sure that we are heard and hopefully benefit from the project. So we have lots of ideas that would that would contribute to the community up on that hill, putting in a little neighborhood district up there. I I don't think that you get to respond by any means, but we just wanted to say that we have so many ideas relative to Seventh Street continuing through. There's probably twelve elementary school aged children up on that hill alone, which is very surprising for how few houses are up there. Having access to the elementary school, which is so close, would be fantastic. The opportunity for green space for all of those kids, having a neighborhood park, secondary access points in and out. High Street is very, or High Drive is very difficult to get up and down. We just had our daughter's second birthday party and had to transport people up the hill in the ice. So we have no way out up there. We've been stuck numerous times in the years that we've lived there. So that's kind of an exciting opportunity to think if Seventh Street went through, that we would have additional entrance and access points into our neighborhood. Having fire hydrants up on the hill, having a whole water system up there is would be a super positive if that was connected. We've had a house burned down in that neighborhood and it would just be wonderful to know that there is additional safety up there with those fire hydrants. And if it's a project to attract new members of the community, there is some housing up there on Seventh Street that we would be concerned about remaining there and hopefully this project could benefit a change, I guess, at the end of Seventh Street with those houses being considered as part of this project in Edwardsville, the city of Edwardsville potentially, you know, stepping up and taking ownership of those properties as well and kind of including that into the project when they're considering single-family homes. We read in the first one, it was like fifteen single-family or twenty-five-ish townhouses. The last city council meetings only mentioned townhomes, which was a little eyebrow raising to us. We would love to see single-family in there versus townhome. So all of the, just a lot of thoughts that we have and we just hope to continue to be involved as that project progresses and either be a point of contact and a voice for the residents up there that have the same opinion. So I thank you for your time. Congratulations.
And while we can't respond, if you wouldn't mind just giving your email address to Mike, I'd love to follow up with you later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I would just note that while we're talking about some of the financial part of the agreements, there's still planning and other items that will be taking place over a period of time. There will be an opportunity of input during the planning process.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. We want to be included as much as the public can be included to be a voice of that neighborhood and the new neighborhood.
Did anyone else have any comments tonight? Go give your name and address, please.
My name is Terrence Parker. Address six forty South Fourth Street, Edwardsville, Kansas. I wanted to say congratulations to the new mayor Kayhart and new council member Mark Bishop. I'm the owner of the Veil Wine and Spirits here and actually a tenant of the city of Edwardsville. And so with that being said, I feel like a lot of my team and customers that we have are obviously residents of Edwardsville. And so we've become pretty, I won't say important or maybe staple piece to the community, but we're pretty ingrained in the community. And so I know there was a lot of talk previously about the new development of the town center, kind of this area where we're in. So if there's any, you know, potential new developments or any thoughts or ideas that might need to be hashed out, I was just wanting to make everybody aware that I'm available for any questions or anything like that because that's kind of a need for us is square footage. At this point, we're kind of busting out of the old building. So, but yeah, that was all I had today. I'd never, I've been to meetings before and had never really formally introduced myself. And so I talked with Zach a couple of weeks ago and he said, you know, I thought today would be a great time. Yeah, congratulations to you guys and thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Have any other comments tonight? Being no more, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is considering a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA thirty-five forty-three nineteen
How much time do we need, Mike?
I would, Scott, ask the mayor, do you think? At least twenty, so whatever.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session concerning to KSA thirty-five forty-three nineteen for consultation with legal counsel, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as it relates to the following items of discussion, the Wood End Road Tax Increment Finance District and the Rural Housing Incentive District. Let's let's return at seven o'clock and let's take five minutes before we start the meeting so that people can take pictures, families can leave, whatever. That's all right? Can I say thirty-five?
Yeah.
Returning at, or. Yeah. Okay.
Seven o'clock.
Right.
We have a motion in the second. Will the clerk please call roll?
I'm sorry, I missed a second. Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to the executive session until seven twenty.
Second. Adams? Bishop? Malott? Schreiber?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.